Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. I have a meeting announcement. Council members are encouraging virtual public participation as there is limited number of seating in council chambers due to the not rising numbers of COVID infections in our area. All meetings will be live streamed on the city, city website and the city channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Strasburger, Mr. Wilson.
Here.
This is Kail Smith, President.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Please rise as we, as we join from our remote locations and in person, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. We have seven items that need added to the agenda this morning. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda's amended. Our next order of business is proclamations. I have one from Councilwoman Gross to be presented. Councilwoman Gross.
Whereas the Council of the City of Pittsburgh works to support the growth of small businesses and entrepreneurship across the city of Pittsburgh. And whereas there are multiple barriers to entrepreneurship, especially for women and people of color. And whereas Prototype Pittsburgh, PGH, operates as a small business incubator with the goal of being the earliest stage incubator possible, giving participants the opportunity to go onto more advanced incubators with greater knowledge on top of granting participants $500 for their endeavors. And whereas, based in Oakland, Prototype PGH has been working to build, build gender and racial equity in technology and entrepreneurship in the city of Pittsburgh. And whereas, celebrating their fifth birthday, Prototype PGH operates with all staff based in the city of Pittsburgh, with co-founder Erin Gatz being a graduate of Rocher High School. And whereas Prototype PGH provides affordable coworking spaces, affordable equipment training in laser cutting, three dimensional printing and vinyl cutting. And whereas Prototype PGH strives to enhance opportunities by subsidizing membership based on income, allowing 24 hour access to their equipment and offering financial training workshops with supplemental information on starting a business or nonprofit. And whereas the workshops offered by Prototype PGH are provided at a cost of no more than $10, originally utilizing grants from prestigious tech companies to provide them for free. And whereas Prototype PGH has engaged thousands of people over the past five years, providing them and their businesses invaluable support. And whereas Prototype PGH strives to provide a zero barrier space to all citizens in the city of Pittsburgh, helping to develop our local economy and provide advancement opportunities to people of color, women and feminists of all genders. And whereas this January Prototype PGH celebrated their fifth anniversary since opening their doors to the people of Pittsburgh. Now therefore be it resolved, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh commends Prototype PGH for their service in providing a safe and nurturing environment for all citizens to grow a business in the city of Pittsburgh, helping to build gender and racial equity. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, February 1st, 2022 to be Prototype PGH Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Councilwoman.
Congratulations.
Councilwoman.
First of all, I want to admit that Prototype is actually in Councilman Lavelle's district. So thank you to Councilman Lavelle for cosponsoring and indulging us on giving this proclamation. I'm a huge fan of Prototype. I first found out about them just in the, in the newspaper and saw that they were creating a space where people could use cutting edge technology that was inclusive, that had low barrier and that really amplifies everything from makers to scientists and, and in the work that they do. So I'm going to let them tell a few stories, but I really want to congratulate them on, on making it, on doing it, on like having the vision, making it happen and keeping it open. So you've really contributed to the city. I appreciate it. Erin, Erin Gatz, the founder.
Yeah, thank you so much. This is a huge honor and I just want to say that these board members are incredible and we couldn't do anything that we do without our volunteer board of directors. So thank you to them. And two really cool things that people use Prototype for, I invite all of you to come and use it. We're open 24 hours a day. One woman works for NASA and she actually uses our laser cutter to prototype wheels for a rover that's going on the moon later this year. And another thing that we do is a monthly code and coffee. Anyone that wants to learn coding skills with a focus on open source software can come in. We provide the coffee and we teach you how to code. So thank you so much again, total honor. I really appreciate the time.
Thank you. Congratulations. And is there anyone here for Catholic Schools Week? Want to come forward? Is that Bill Paduto's sister-in-law? I remember you taught at St. Agnes. Thank you. Someone just come here. Whereas the 48th Annual Celebration of National Catholic Schools Week, CSW, will be held on Sunday, January 30th to Saturday, February 5th, 2022. And whereas Catholic schools across the city of Pittsburgh will be participating in CSW. Excuse me. Thank you. And whereas the schools of the Catholic Diocese of Pittsburgh play an important role in fostering communion, communion and community echoing the gospel to gather all nations in Christ with a sense of compassionate service to all. And whereas we acknowledge the Catholic schools in the city of Pittsburgh who pride themselves in providing a well-rounded education to all students with service to others as a central aspect into their training. And whereas now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Catholic Diocese of Pittsburgh for its commitment to excellence in spiritual and academic instruction. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare January 30th through February 5th, 2022 to, to be Catholic Schools Week in the city of Pittsburgh. Have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation, proclamations approved. I'm going to just say thank you for everything that you do. I know that Councilman O'Connor and others may want to have a few things to say, but thank you for the work that you do across the city of Pittsburgh. And you want to come up and introduce yourself to the public and talk a little bit about Catholic schools and the great things you're doing. Teresa.
Thank you so much, Council President Kail Smith and all of you for helping us celebrate Catholic Schools Week in this way. It is truly a blessing to be here today, even though it is another Paduto, right? Another Paduto at the top. So we have had 200 years history, over 200 years, history in this country of serving our communities. And we at this time have about 44 schools, high schools and grade schools throughout Western Pennsylvania, throughout the Diocese of Pittsburgh. And I have only the words of a second grade class from yesterday when I asked them, why do you love Catholic schools? And they said, because every day we talk about God. And I walked away saying, mission accomplished, because that's why we're here. Our Catholic schools are here every single day to teach our students, not just academics, but to live, love and learn Jesus Christ. And again, so grateful for this proclamation, so grateful for the city of Pittsburgh always, and so grateful for you. Thank you.
I'm Anna Baimanti Torrance. I'm the Secretary for Catholic Education Evangelization in the Diocese. And I just want to thank President Teresa Kail Smith and all of the council members for this wonderful honor on behalf of Bishop Zubik. He had hoped to be here, had planned to come here today. And just one extent, again, our heartfelt thanks for this wonderful acknowledgement of our Catholic schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm just going to thank the Paduto family. I just want to thank you for all you've done for Pittsburgh. But I, I also want to mention that you worked at St. Agnes in Oakland when it was an extra mile school and you did a lot of work with students from the Hill District and Uptown and all around. And the things that you've done were just tremendous in their lives. So I just want to thank you for all your work in that as well. Would any members want to say anything or join us for the photo? Want to come join us for the photo? Thank you and thank you for your work. They really earned their tuition with me. And our next order of business. Reverend Burgess has to make a motion for executive session. Does he have to do that now before we start to amend? Do that under, are you sure? Okay. Okay. No, I just want to make sure. He just said as long as we do it through the meeting. Okay. I just want to make sure. No, no, I'll get it. Thank you. I got it on there. Yeah. Thank you. The next order of business is public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state, the comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. Well, we have the first speaker, please. And the first speaker I have registered is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Biltsoofer, Atlanta, Georgia, Gaborone, Botswana, additional residences, Global Intelligence Society, U.S., national candidate 2024, globalintelligence社 society.org. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the African Studies Association and the American Anthropological Association. February is 2022 is African Intelligence Month, copyright RLM 2012 and 2022. Council, mayor, why does Pittsburgh have no brother or sister city in Africa? Is that racist? I and the Global Intelligence Society are seeking a link with Gaborone, Botswana. What biogenetic, what political skin are you in? Is U.S. government now become relentlessly a skin game? What if Mr. Ganey were white? All else remaining the same. A concern of illegitimate because no vote by voter verification, zoophilia, pedophilia tolerant Pittsburgh offices of mayor and council is race-based, therefore racist identity politics. Vote skin color overall. What does the Democratic Party's skin game have to do with finding a candidate, supporting a candidate with the best intelligence and the most sophisticated information framework? Skin, color and intelligence correlation. Non-general population information researched by specialist Lynn Nan Templar. Brain, neural and psychological disciplinary intelligence comparing and contrasting correlation of dominant regional skin color and mean intelligences via IQ tests, which the GIS and I do not use, shows that worldwide higher IQ is highly correlated with lighter skin, .91R, especially Europe, and lower IQ highly correlated greater than .94R with darker skin, especially in the Africa region. The general USA and Pittsburgh population information sharing reflects this contrast since the research information permeates online and offline sources. Skin colored, intro black Mr. Ganey reflexively perceived here to be dumber than would be skin colored, white face Ganey. Black face Ganey is expected, like it or not, more likely to fail in office. The national DP and Biden and the local DP and Ganey, whom the Pittsburgh council-funded black political empowerment group relentlessly, explicitly told black African-American Pittsburghers to vote for Ganey because he is black, are using racist politics stressing skin color is the primary basis for the mayor and for the U.S. Supreme Court. We can find no connection between skin color as a cause of intelligence differentiation.
Next speaker is Ikana Halmakina. Ikana Halmakina. Ikana Halmakina is the next speaker, please. Good morning.
Greetings. Greetings.
Morning.
My title is Ikana Halmakina. I am the grand anchor of the Aracua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, also known as Indian, Indigenous People of America. Back in December, City Council members voted nearly unanimously to increase their salaries by 22%, a whopping $72,000 to $88,000. I would like to applaud Corey O'Connor for abstaining from receiving this increase. That took place in your paycheck on January 28th, while the rest of us are attempting to figure out how to make ends meet with the inflation at an all time high. How are you sleeping in your home? That must have no mirrors. Next, I would like to discuss the serious matter of public safety in the city of Pittsburgh. It is my understanding that a letter was written to alert the city of Pittsburgh that its bridge, namely, the bridge that just collapsed, was in danger and in need of repair. However, that letter, like many others, warning the city fell upon deaf ears. I am a bit curious as to who you actually paid or have been paying to assess these bridges because they need fire. And the whole evaluation process needs to be revamped. If they solid fit, cannot sound the alarm and to close the bridge that was recently inspected September of 2021. We, the people, demand transparency. We want a publicly accessible list of bridges which may leave us or our loved ones in harm's way. And don't take forever to publish this critical report. Another matter of concern is that the growing violence in the Pittsburgh public schools with alarming fights and gun violence breaking out at schools, most recently happening at Hope Taylor Alderweil, Carrick, Derek Rocher and the recent tragic shooting death of Marquise Campbell, may he rest in peace. In my opinion, there are measures that could be taken such as the utilization of artificial intelligence that can be used to detect some of these brewing disputes that are often openly being aired on social media. Are we using everything that we have to make sure that our children have a chance in society? Are we working on implementing some of these trade schools back into the Pittsburgh public schools that will give our children the confidence that they need to be positive contributors to society? You have a chance to make a difference. Don't allow enough.
Thank you. And are, is there any speakers in the audience? Mr. Ludwig?
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Lester Ludwig. I live at 6589 Rosemore Street in Squirrel Hill. And I come to you today to, to address the subject of annexation. In the late 1900s, I had a business in, located in Route 30 Imperial. I was a tenant of Sam Viviano Vimco Macaroni, the owner, being the owner of the property on which, in which I was operating. And I had a, a great fear of being absorbed by Vimco because they used eggs. And I was an egg processor. So I wanted the 52 acres and the 20,000 square foot building. And Sam had a fire, a devastating fire and didn't have enough money to resuscitate and offered the building to me and the acreage for $175,000. And you'll say, well, what the heck does that have to do with annexing? Well, God isn't making any more ground. And that ground in a period of, a short period of a year or so that I was still the owner, the value went up from 175 at the bankruptcy sale was 250. Well, wait a minute, that's Imperial. That was out in the boonies. We've since had passed that in Clinton, the construction of the Post Gazette paper building. So what I'm saying to you is when the price is right, and I think that it probably is right, take what you can get because there isn't any more ground. You're losing an opportunity for growth. Don't be afraid. Stand tall. You've got a job to do. Somebody has to exercise judgment. And my judgment is that you're making a mistake if you don't take the annexation issue into account. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Next speaker, please. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning, Ms. I think I'm a little disturbed. He makes, he makes statement, but he can't hear us. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. He can't hear, hear us when we're talking. And I want him to hear me. But first I want, I want to talk to each one of you personally, House members. You're making like, well, what'd he say, $88,000 a year and you won't even come to the meetings. Whenever you got a meeting, because Mr. O'Connor, when you had a meeting about AIDS, I was really upset. They were explaining about AIDS and you were the only one here, but you got eight others that won't even come. You make meetings, you, 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 that costs us money for you to have these TVs on and only one person sometime is me and only one council person at the table. You know, that is unbelievable. You should be fine if you don't come to council on two days out of a week and they making $88,000. Come on, count that money. We can take five instead. I said before, years before, we only need five council members, not eight or nine. You won't even come. Then I want to explain, I have here where I want to read this letter and I wish Les could hear it, to District Attorney Sappala. This was written 12/23/2002. Repeatedly, I have tried to meet with you per our conversation. You just gave the district attorney two proclamations that day. He told me that to call and he would see me. The receptionist would not let me see me. Even Kathy Malkin was your head judge, said, tell Sappala to see you. He would not see me. Now, out there in Wilkinsburg, you had Yingling and Dominic from the mayor, from the, Dominic is the deputy coroner. When I went to see him, you know what this man said to me when I went in and I asked to see the autopsy? He's, he was trying to show me. I had seen it and I started to cry. He said, you sit in your crying. You ought to be glad he's dead. Do you understand? He telling me my son should be dead, but what's in his system? Well, the autopsy showed no alcohol, no drugs in his blood system, but you had this white man sitting there telling me that I should be glad my son is dead. But you got here in the city of Pittsburgh, if a dog stays out in the cold, a half an eye, you can go to jail. But you can't go to jail when you have a man, my son begging. He's saying, I have one lung. And every time I hear them people, men that died at the hands of the police and saying, if I could only breathe, that's what my son was saying. You understand all he was asking is for them to push a button for the paramedics to come. They waited 45 minutes. My daughter figure out 45 minutes. And when they came with the, with the paramedics, they pronounced my son dead. You have a policeman that insists, they said they had to insist to work on my son. They had to insist because the police tried to prevent it.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mr. Brady?
Morning, Councilman.
Morning, Mr. Brady.
My name is Tom Brady. I live in Mount Washington. I am here for safety. First, I want to thank, if he's still chairman of Public Works, Mr. Coghill. I thought the Public Works did a great job in my area of shovel wind and getting the streets plowed. I thought they did a great job. The only thing about, you can improve is in a few days after it's done, go around after the plows did the thing, they packed the handicap ramps and you can't get off. And now people like me now with my braces net, I can't get around. I got to walk the streets and I'm walking Killer Avenue. That's Bailey Avenue. There were so many accidents, but we got to get that straightened out. So in the future, we got to clear the, you know, the ramps. That would be great. Number two, I've called, I talked to Corey O'Connor, Teresa Smith about the bridge. That was a disgrace. And if the county notified you and you knew about that, you should not be playing guard. You should have been shutting that bridge down because you're lucky that that was a delay because if school buses went over it and people were walking under it, it could have been kids getting killed. You cannot play this way. You've got to be serious. If you shut down the bridges, then you got to tell the government, we can't have people crossing these bridges. It's too dangerous. I don't know what's going on, but that is the second one. Number three, I have called, and I said this before, years by years and again, public sidewalks. I have a friend who lived up in Dormont, I mean, Mount Lebanon. He told me if the sidewalks are like this out in Mount Lebanon, the next day they'd be fined. I called and I talked to Bruce Kraus's office and they told me 24 hours and then they have to get it cleaned. And then if they want to find them, it takes two weeks and it goes to another meeting and then it goes, it takes total almost 90 days. That means you're in springtime. That means you're not doing a job. If you want people, you don't want to see people falling down, breaking hips, breaking ankles. And as I say, on Killer Avenue, Bailey Avenue, I've seen people walking down the street, on down the avenue, on, in strollers with kids. And they're lucky they're not going to get hit because this people are lazy and you've got to start finding these people. You cannot fall in 24 hours after they come down. If they're not, you, you take their meter maids off the thing because downtown now is a ghost town. You can put them in cars and go in different areas, counties, you know, go into District One, District Three, just every other day, go to a different district. If you do 10% better than the city is doing now. If you do ten percent better than the city is doing now, looking, it would be great. But you're not doing nothing. So it's looking like a disgrace. And that is your fault. You should be forcing this safety. This is safety. Safety now with the interest, number three. Number one, your policies make money. Number two, do less than you have to. Number three, look into safety. It shouldn't be that way anymore. It should be safety, number one, and that's how it should be. You've got people out there that are paying your salary. I'm not complaining about what you've got to make, but you should be doing better. I'm sorry about this. You all have a nice day. Take it easy.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Are there any further speakers in the audience that wishes to address City Council? Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing no further speakers, we move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
Papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works. It was just in here. Thank you, Councilman Burgess, for Councilman Coghill.
All right. Councilman Coghill presents Bill number fifty-six. Resolution vacating a portion of Forbes Avenue laid out in the Associate Congregate Plan, recorded in Plan Book Volume One, page ninety-five, in the First Ward, Sixth Council District. Bill number fifty-seven. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Recycling Partnership, Inc., to conduct public outreach surrounding the city's recycling program, and to purchase containers for curbside residential recycling collection, and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bill number fifty-eight. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or use of existing agreements between the city and Sufisara Bhutara Coleman for the creation and installation of public art at Shortiers Spray Park at a cost not to exceed eleven thousand dollars. Bill number seventy-nine. Resolution for the amending resolution number seven ninety-six, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty-fourteen Capital Budget and the Twenty-fourteen CDBG Program and the Twenty-fourteen through Twenty-nineteen Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Architectural and Engineering by thirty-six thousand eight hundred twenty dollars and twenty-one cents and Increasing Capital Equipment Acquisition by thirty-six thousand eight hundred twenty dollars and twenty-one cents. Bill number eighty. Resolution for the amending resolution number seven seventy-two, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty-seventeen Capital Budget and the Twenty-seventeen CDBG Program and the Twenty-seventeen through Twenty-twenty-two Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Integrated Self-Assessed Business Tax and Revenue Management by three thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and Increasing Capital Equipment Acquisition by three thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars. Bill number eighty-one. Resolution for the amending resolution number seven seventy-seven, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty-eighteen Capital Budget and the Twenty-eighteen CDBG Program, the Twenty-eighteen through Twenty-twenty-three Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Enterprise Resource Planning by one hundred thirty-seven thousand thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents and Increasing Capital Equipment Acquisition by one hundred thirty-seven thousand thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents. Bill number eighty-two. Resolution for the amending resolution number eight sixty-three, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty-nineteen Capital Budget and the Twenty-nineteen CDBG Program, the Twenty-nineteen through Twenty-twenty-four Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Consultants for Plans and Studies by one hundred thousand dollars, Reducing Park Reconstruction by two hundred thousand dollars, and Increasing Capital Equipment Acquisition by three hundred thousand dollars.
Madam Clerk, we have vehicle purchases for Councilman Coghill's bills for snow removal. Was that under this committee?
Or is it Finance?
Okay. Councilman, please make a motion to waive the rules of council.
Motion to waive the rules of council. I don't know the bill number.
The bill's number, Madam Clerk.
Bill seventy-nine, Bill eighty, Bill eighty-one, and Bill eighty-two.
Bills seventy-nine through eighty-two.
Second, second with discussion, please.
Discussion, Councilman Kraus.
Thanks very much, Councilman. I'm going to ask you if you would please provide council with information, let me find the exact bill number here, the bill where there's the reduction of park reconstruction. If you could advise the council, please, as to what projects might possibly come off the table because of the reallocation of those funds, please.
So we can also have that discussion later, but Councilman Coghill, do you want to address it?
You know, working with the administration and Jake Pollock, he turned over many leaves to find how we can get more vehicles on the street before the year ends. I know that I talked to Mr. Wilson about it. I know that Councilwoman Gross talked to Jake Pollock as to some funds, I believe, were coming out of a project earmarked for her district. Part of it was through planning. So, so it's a bunch of little pieces here, Councilman Kraus.
Yeah, a bunch of little pieces doesn't help me make an informed decision. So if, and I don't mean to have the discussion here and now, but with the reduction of park reconstruction, if you'd just please provide the council with a list of projects that may possibly then come off the table with the reallocation of those dollars. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Wednesday, Councilman. So, and I do want to thank you, Councilman Coghill, for working towards this. I hope we get the, before Thursday, I'm understanding we're supposed to have some not-so-great weather Thursday, but I do want to also thank Jake Pollock for working over the weekend on these issues, I think, and for thinking outside the box and figuring out how we can try to address these issues of snow removal, especially on our side of town, so just all over across the city of Pittsburgh. Councilman?
Yeah, no, Madam President, Councilman Kraus, I, I just want to really thank the others for being flexible for, you know, monies that were earmarked for other things in their district. One thing that the mayor and I learned out, you know, in the snowstorms was, we need more vehicles. And we've made a lot of positive changes, distribution of salt, calling over employees in for overtime. And we'll talk more about it tomorrow. But this, we felt, was a necessity. Anything less than getting vehicles on the street before, I hope, our next snowstorm. So I wanted to thank the other council members who made the provisions to make this happen, and we look forward to talking about it tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other members, Councilman?
Yeah, I just want to state that, you know, the vehicle is one thing, but also the actual technology. So, you know, it'd be good to get a report to understand where we're at with, if the drivers are following GPS, or if they're back to paper routes. You know, a lot of people are confused, the public, you know, the public's confused. They see the snow tracker, and that, that they think that the driver's on a GPS route, but that's a different GPS. And people are confused on why, you know, some of the streets, you know, are being done several days later. So it'd be good to get a handle, just overall, what the plan is.
Thank you. Any other members? Councilman?
No, I would say, Councilman Wilson, that's a point of contention with me. I will tell you that the tracker, so many times, it's, if you're going under a certain mile per hour, it's not showing up on the tracker. People watch that tracker, they, they live by it. And, you know, the minute they see there's not a truck in one of my neighborhoods, they're on the phone to me. So we are looking at that, as to how we can improve that technology, where a truck can show up even if it's backing up a hill at two mile an hour. And the long-term plan as well, you know, we have a short-term plan with these new vehicles and getting them on the street, but we also have a long-term plan that we're working on as to address the tracker and vehicle fleet period overall, so.
So I just, I'm sorry, Councilman.
I, I just want to be, you know, furthermore, my comments around snow removal are quite simple. Regardless if they're following the paper route or not, or if they're following the GPS or not, we have IMP, they implement the snow tracker. I mean, it shouldn't take three-on-one, it's going to take a council member to send it over to the supervisor to get the streets done several days later. There should be an automated report that goes back to the division of where the truck's not been. If we have trucks, okay, so we're going to get the trucks, then, after we get the trucks, all they got to do is figure out, like, who, even if they're on paper routes, there should be a very simple report sent back to the division to send out the truck where it hasn't been. So I realize that it's hectic, and there might be, you know, the truck might have to, you know, go off the route to, to get something that's serious, like an emergency, but, I mean, I, I just think that we're, we have a lot of technology out there. We have a, a full department IMP that is, you know, implementing the snow tracker, and it'd be great to hear why we can't just have a very simple report that says where the truck hasn't been.
Thank you. And we can debate this tomorrow. Is there anything else for the other members?
Madam President, may I again, please?
Yes, Councilman Kraus.
I, I want to thank Councilwoman Gross and our budget office, they've already given me the answer to the question I had, where the funding is, of projects, where it's coming from. Appreciate that. I'd ask you just one more thing, Councilman, if you could, please. I think we will be looking at reallocation of about four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. If you could just, please, you know, just, you know, take your time. I know we're not going to discuss this tomorrow, but if we could have an approximate cost per vehicle and about how many vehicles that might purchase. And I just wanted to give you some time to pull that together, okay? Thanks, Councilman, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. Just a request that whatever was sent to Councilman Kraus, can all of council please get that before tomorrow?
Yes.
If we can have it to the clerk who will distribute it through council members, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything?
Just two quick numbers for you, Councilman Kraus. I believe the number was more like four hundred and seventy thousand, but I am meeting with Mr. Pollock later to discuss that. Six of those are for new vehicles, which can range anywhere, you know, these are three-quarter ton vehicles, they're, they're not overly sized, but they're small enough on our tight streets. So six for new vehicles, six for rental, renting vehicles, somewhere around four to five hundred thousand dollars is the number they come up with, and we'll get more on those facts and talk more about it tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman.
Thank you. Anything else from members? I just want to real quickly mention that we have, this council has been addressing snow removal for a very long time, back since Snowmageddon. And I think that we have, we understand that our crews do an amazing job, they need equipment, they need, you know, that, they need support, they need the tools to do the job. And we've also put a lot of money into technology, so we want to see how that's all playing out and working. But I'm looking forward to the conversation tomorrow, but I do think that this administration, you know, I want to say, the previous administration did a lot. They were thirteen million dollars worth of new vehicles for the city of Pittsburgh, are building a new division, the fourth division. They've changed the salt and how we, how we use the salt. They put in the trackers. They've done a lot to try to do it, and we're still struggling with snow in the city of Pittsburgh. And so I think that, I, I've mentioned this before to the administration, maybe we ought to have a snow summit, where everybody's sitting down, talking together, but we should be bringing together, we talk about mergers and all sorts of things, how can we work together with our neighboring municipalities, the boroughs around us? How is the county helping us with snow removal? I think those are conversations that we all need to have. I mean, we do pay a quarter of the taxes for this, for the county, and I think we all get, have a good relationship with our county exec. So it'd be good to have some of those conversations. But I think maybe after, it seems that we can't get through a snowstorm before we have the, the plan for a summit. So I think it'd be good to, to have the conversation down the road. Anything else from members? Seeing none, all in favor?
I.
This.
Oh, wait for the rolls, forgive me, yes, aye.
All in favor, okay, aye. Any opposed? The bill will appear on tomorrow's, the bills will appear on tomorrow's Senate Committee Agenda. Thank you, Councilman. And now that moves us on to Councilwoman Gross, who's been waiting patiently for her bills. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilwoman, good morning.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number fifty-nine. Resolution amending resolution four seventy, that originally authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a corporation agreement with the Port Authority of Allegheny County and the URA concerning the Bus Rapid Transit Project, to now, through an amendment to the aforementioned corporation agreement, authorize appropriation of an amount not to exceed twelve million eight hundred thousand dollars for use in the Bus Rapid Transit Project, and to authorize certain property transfers, easements, vacations, dedication, and right-of-way accrochments with the Port Authority of Allegheny County necessary for completion of the Bus Rapid Transit Project.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Madam President, no new papers. May I, I, I just got an email announcing the purchase of new snow vehicles coming from the mayor and Councilman Coghill. In the future, could we please allow council to do the work that council needs to do to approve the funds before we make announcements?
So that's a, that's a, I will say that's a reasonable request, but we'll take that up in motions and resolutions.
Thank you.
And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number sixty. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Judith Pearson Nolan, Stephen Nolan and their attorneys, in an amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County. Bill number sixty-one. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant payable to Petru Gallo, Gordon, Alfano, Bostic, and Ross Spence, LLC for professional legal services in connection with civil rights litigation, for an amount not to exceed nine thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Thank you, Councilman Lavelle. You have a motion to waive the rules of council for Bill seventy-six. And the second, any discussion? All in favor? Bill will appear on tomorrow's Senate Committee Agenda. Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services. Okay. Okay.
Also, Councilman O'Connor presents.
I thought that came under my committee, Madam Clerk. Okay, no, go ahead. I just want to make sure.
I'm not waiving the rolls.
I think that. That's on the Councilwoman, Kail Smith.
Okay. No. No, just, just read his bills, please. And we'll do the, okay. You read his bills?
Hold on one second.
I thought he, Councilman O'Connor, don't you have?
Councilman O'Connor presents.
So yes, I, I need to speak to him, but seventy-six is a separate bill, I think.
Seventy-six is under Council President's Committee. So we hadn't read it yet, it hadn't come up yet.
So when it comes up.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number sixty-two. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Trek Bicycle in an amount of one hundred twelve thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-six cent for electric bicycles provided for the Bureau of Police Bicycle Unit. Bill number seventy-seven. Ordinance amended and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title One Administrative Article Three, Organization, Chapter One Eighteen, Department of Mobility and Infrastructure by adding one eighteen oh three, Infrastructure Asset Reporting. Bill number seventy-eight. Ordinance amended and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title One Administrative Article Nine, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities by adding Chapter One Seventy-Nine H, Commission on Infrastructure Assets Reporting and Investment.
Councilman O'Connor.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, the two bills that were introduced, seventy-seven and seventy-eight, if we can add Councilwoman Strasburger as a co-sponsor on both of those, she was very helpful in working through that process. The one is about transparency, and she had some very good recommendations, not just bridges, but other things. And I also want to thank her for being on site with me Friday. It was a pretty cold day, but we stuck it out, and being a couple-year-old mom, I would say, she was the only one prepared. She brought us all snacks. So I want to thank her. But then, overall, just on the bridge.
She also brought her brilliant mind on that.
But overall, just a big thank you to everybody for their help and support. Public safety was amazing, and to get everybody out of there with, with no major injuries, we, we got pretty lucky. But thank you for the support on those two bills. And then, obviously, the declaration is important, because we're hearing that PennDOT is going to fund the entire project for us. So thank you, Madam President, for introducing that again today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from members? I just will thank you both for your work on this and the administration, maybe PennDOT for their willingness to pay for the repairs, the needed repairs or reconstruction. Oh, okay, next is Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 63, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 500 of 2020, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to enter into a maintenance agreement with OPEC Corporation for Maintenance Services related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning Workstation by exercising the option to extend the term of the agreement for one year at a cost not to exceed $10,710.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 64, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 886, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Capital CDBG Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by reducing CDBG personnel by $64,750 and increasing CDBG administration by $64,750. Bill Number 65, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 863, entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2019 CDBG Program by transferring remaining funds from the Jane Street Step Reconstruction Project to the North Side Christian Health Center, $76,000, and Traffic Calming, $14,220.54. Bill Number 73, Ordinance Amendment to Pittsburgh Code Title IV, Public Places and Properties, Chapter 416, Obstructions by deleting sections 416, 14, 16, 18, 20, 21, 22, and 27, and adding new chapters 425, entitled Outdoor Dining or Retail Activities in the Public Right-of-Way.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have several bills today. We have five appointments, one reappointment, one communication, and the emergency declaration. So we'll read all those, Madam. Thank you.
Madam, Madam President?
The appointments first, please. Yes, Councilman.
And may we take those one at a time since they require different actions? Would you be okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you for, thank you. I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 66, Resolution Appointing Heidi Norman as Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, what's the will, council? I would like to hold a motion to interview. I would like to hold for a motion to interview.
Then I'll second.
Second.
I'll remove my motion to approve and second, Madam President.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll schedule that interview and work to get her approved. And Bill numbers?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we'll hold for, we'll get that scheduled, working with the Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, Bill Number 67, please.
Bill 67, Resolution Appointing Erin Abrams as Director of City Planning.
Motion to hold for interview, please.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get the interview scheduled. Thank you for city planning. Thank you. And Bill 68 and 69?
Bill 68, Resolution Appointing Leesmith as Board of Directors of the Equipment Leasing Authority for a Term of Five Years Ending June 15 of 2026. Bill Number 69, Resolution Appointing Anthony Coghill as a Board Member of the Equipment Leasing Authority for a Term to expire on June 15, 2026.
Motion to approve.
Discussions?
Second, excuse me, please. May we also have the reading of Bill 70, since it is also an appointment to Leasing Authority, please?
Bill 70, Resolution Reappointing Bill Urbannick as a Board Member of the Equipment Leasing Authority for a Term to expire on June 15, 2026.
Motion to approve.
And second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I want to thank both Mr. Urbannick and Councilman Coghill for their willingness to serve, but I also want to point out how fortunate we are to have Bill Urbannick with his institutional knowledge. Madam Clerk.
Bill 71, Resolution Appointing Mayor Ed Gany as a Member of the Comprehensive Municipal Pension Trust Board Fund Board.
Motion to approve.
Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And I just want to thank Jake Pollak for working with us, and we'll get Mayor Gany, all in favor?
Aye.
Mayor Gany is approved for the pension, pension fund. Thank you. And we have one reappoint, did we do the reappointment? We did that. How about one communication for acting pay?
Bill 72, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval on behalf of the Department of Finance for Jennifer Gula, per the acting pay policy revised in June of 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, that's red receive and file, please. Motion to red receive and file.
Removed.
Well, that's true. Sorry, forgive me.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We got through those bills, and now the Bill Number 76, the Emergency Declaration, Declaration of Emergency.
Bill 76, Resolution Providing for Ratification and Extension by the Council of the City of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency for 90 additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until May 2 of 2022 in response to the collapse of the Fern Hollow Bridge, and further authorizing the mayor, the mayor's designated directors, including but not limited to the Director of Mobility and Infrastructure, to enter into an intergovernmental corporation agreement or agreements with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and its designated agencies, including but not limited to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency for delegation of certain municipal responsibilities and for receipt of aid in response to the collapse of the Fern Hollow Bridge.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
To approve. And a second, any discussion? Councilman Burgess?
We need a motion to waive the rules to take it up.
Councilman Burgess?
We need a motion, we need, excuse me, Madam Clerk, you need a motion to waive the rules. First of all, we need a motion to waive the rules of council so we consider the emergency notification.
Motion to waive the rules of council.
We have motions, we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The bill will appear on today's motions and resolutions. Councilman Burgess, did something else?
I am grateful for all of the activity that is surrounding infrastructure and the collapse of the Fern Hollow Bridge. I have been quiet on purpose. Half of the bridges in my council district, there are moments when God speaks and I listen. My sister-in-law, at 6:45 or so, travels that bridge five to six times a day. And it just happened that she was off the day the bridge collapsed. That is her normal route and her normal time. I know the people who were injured, and I've been quiet because God spoke. The reason there wasn't fatalities, wasn't anything that was man-made, was a two-hour delay, so the school buses weren't there. God spoke. God decided to save those lives. And I'm grateful and thankful of what God did. And so there are moments in time, in times like this, where we should reflect, and that's why I've not said much, because my energy has been on praising God and grateful that there was not the loss of life. Yes, we will rebuild that bridge, and we will do infrastructure, but we should pause, I think, I have. I think all of us should just pause for a moment, and whatever your religious denomination, affiliation, and just be thankful that God on that day showed us a miracle, that He spared the life of people, that even in the midst of difficulty and negativity, God is still God.
Thank you, Reverend Burgess. Anything, Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I just, you know, I just want to talk about the declaration of emergency and what that does and what that can do possibly in the future. So my understanding is that this declaration, and which I would like a full briefing for council, so that we can fully understand the entire situation, even though, you know, it doesn't lie within each of our council districts. It'd be good for us to have a full view of what's going on here. But, you know, this declaration of emergency, what it does is it gets everyone in the same room so we can get it all done. So there's multiple bridges that are in the same condition or worse condition, and whenever I meet with Domi and I ask them, what can speed up this process, it's exactly this, is to get these agreements done faster. So I have a bridge that's, you know, down the one lane across 279. So does that mean that we should declare a declaration of emergency for these bridges so we can, once we have the money in place, to actually do these agreements faster with PennDOT? I mean, I think we should look into this, because it's a serious situation that these agreements take so long to actually, you know, the money's there. We can see in the budget. It's in the TIP program. We're going to pay 5%. They're going to pay 95%. But actually finalize all this, so we can get this done, we could speed this bridge up. The Swindell Bridge, we could speed it up by two years, at least a year. So, and that's, that's important. And I think we should look into how we expedite these agreements.
Anything else from members?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Yeah, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I'm just trying to understand process here. I'm working off of two agendas, and I'm not sure which one is the right agenda I should be working off of. That we waived the rules to amend the agenda to permit Bill 76 to appear on the agenda. That still required a waiver of the rules for us to consider the bill today? Or is it because, do we do that because we need to take final action at the end of the meeting?
Why, we need to take final action under motions and resolutions for the declaration.
And therefore, the purpose of the waiver of the rules to consider the bill today?
Correct.
Thank you. Appreciate your help.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Anything else from members? I'll just say that I did ask for a briefing for council on infrastructure in general, not just bridges, landslides, everything else. So we will be working on that, but I think right now our egos could be put aside for a second, and just let's focus on getting this bridge taken care of. Let's focus on some of the things that we need to take care of, and then we will sit down with the administration to work on some real plans for infrastructure, including landslides, the roadways and bridges and all the things, trees and all the things that, you know, come before us. But I want to be clear, you know, we have a responsibility to the city of Pittsburgh and to protect them financially and protect them in general in terms of safety. Having these discussions during council is not beneficial to our residents. I think it's important for them to know we are working on things and that we will do what we can to address the issues, and we are working with the administration, do want to hold people accountable, but also want to make sure that we're working towards the protection of the city of Pittsburgh in terms of safety and legal liabilities. So with that said, we will have a briefing on these issues, on infrastructure and some other things. Anything else from members? Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. I was gonna, thank you, Madam President. I was gonna wait till the end, but just because you brought, brought that financial piece up, I couldn't, I couldn't help but bring up the fact that, I believe just yesterday, the White House came out with a guidance as to how municipalities like ours could apply for and spend the infrastructure bill money. If we don't prioritize what we are, what we want to do in the city of Pittsburgh, not just for bridges, not just for roads and physical infrastructure, but things like broadband and getting broadband to every single household in the city, we're going to have money left on the table. And there's money that we can, we can apply for and spend without raising taxes, without doing it off the backs of the people who live in the city. So I really just wanted to add that, that I think that, you know, it's really timely that Councilman O'Connor and the mayor, Mayor Gany, thought of a commission, and to think about infrastructure and to look at it and to stay on it, just like we have so many other different types of commissions. But I think even before that commission is, is, you know, holds its first meeting, we need to get our act together as a council, working with the mayor's office and relevant departments to figure out what are our top priorities, what do we need to apply for now, and get in the hopper so that we have the ability to take advantage of this sort of once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And then on that piece, the infrastructure bill is really only going to fund 10% to 15% of the bridges in this country that are in poor condition, and 10% of the infrastructure needs in general. So I don't know, you know, we obviously can't control that here, but we need, we need federal infrastructure dollars that are coming on a regular basis to make up for the lack of investment over the last 50 years. And, you know, I hope that we can advocate for that as strongly as possible from our positions. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just add to that, that we, again, will have those meetings, and I don't think it's just this council needing to get their act together. I think it's, we need to get on the same page as a city. So with that said, do we take a vote yet, Madam Clerk? We did, okay. Oh, we introduce, we'll do it, final motions and resolutions.
Yep.
Okay. We'll now move on to any unfinished businesses or any unfinished business before council. Seeing none, the next order of businesses reports to committee for final action. Councilman Lavelle, Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 53, Report to the Committee on Finance and Law for January 26, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 15, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Daniel Dellingbach in the Amount of $7,500 in Full and Final Settlement. Bill Number 21, Resolution Establishing Pittsburgh as an International City of Peace. Bill Number 33, Resolution Amending Resolution 884, Making Appropriations to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public Business of the City and for Meeting the Debt Charges thereof for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2022, so as to reopen the 2022 Budget to Reflect Changes to the Office of the Mayor and the Office of Management and Budget. Bill Number 34, Resolution Amending Resolution 885, Entitled, Resolution Fixing the Number of Officers and Employees of the City for the 2022 Fiscal Year and the Rate of Compensation Thereof and Setting Maximum Levels for Designated Positions, so as to reopen the 2022 Budget to Reflect Changes to the Office of the Mayor and the Office of Management and Budget. Bill Number 35, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of David Lewis and His Attorney in the Amount of $75,000 relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
You've heard the reading and the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage where I, when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle? Mr. O'Connor? Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And Councilman Anthony Coghill, Chair of Public City, Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 54, Report to the Committee on Public Works for January 26, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 26, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Automated Red Light Enforcement Funding Program for Signal Replacement at the Perrisville Avenue and North Charles Intersection, and Further Authorizing Expenditures Not to Exceed $233,066. Bill Number 27, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Automated Red Light Enforcement Funding Program for Signal Replacement at the Black Street in North Nagley Avenue Intersection, and Further Authorizing Expenditures Not to Exceed $230,599. Bill Number 28, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 666, Entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into an Agreement with the PA Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program to Accept the Grant and Authorize Necessary Expenditures. Bill Number 29, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Alpine Allegheny Inc. in an Amount of $5,742.47 for Installation of Bike Racks in for installation of bike racks in the North Side and Morningside neighborhoods. Bill number thirty, Resolution amending Resolution eight sixty-nine, entitled Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number ninety-eight, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding to support Washington Boulevard Multi-Module Path Construction or the provide, providing for a contract and or agreements, providing for the design, repairs, maintenance, improvement, emergencies, and or the purchase of materials, equipment, and supplies in connection with the Washington Boulevard Trail Project and providing for the payment of the cost not to exceed five hundred sixty thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Forbid accepted that were, that was higher than originally anticipated and for additional sources of funding not to exceed seven hundred forty-one thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars. To increase the amount authorized for this project to seven hundred fifty-three thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars in increase of twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars, federally reimbursable at eighty percent, and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed nineteen hundred dollars in increase of two hundred dollars from the previously executed agreement. Bill number thirty-one, Resolution amending Resolution one twenty-three, Providing for an Agreement to Set forth Financial Obligations and Maintenance Responsibilities for the Project and the Pedestrian Facilities with PennDOT. Local costs associated with work to be done on the SR eight eighty-five ADA ramps and upgraded black travel signal poles being constructed and inspected by and further providing for reimbursement to PennDOT of the cost of seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and fifty cent to increase the total not to exceed amount to one hundred twenty-nine thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty-two cent, an increase of fifty-one thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars and seventy-two cent.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to our last committee of the day, Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill number fifty-five, Report of the Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management for January twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number thirty-six, Resolution amending Resolution number six sixty-four, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with OST, Inc. for short-term emergency professional IT staffing resources as needed to fulfill a number of critical IT and device-related projects extending the term. Bill number thirty-seven, Resolution amending Resolution five twenty-three, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with CIS for Albert MD Monitoring Application to Predict Malicious Activity on the City's Network by Monitoring, Alerting, and Analyzing Information Gathered by Sensors by Extending the Term. Bill number thirty-eight, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into a software license agreement with Reports Now, Inc., and no cost to the city.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions, and we need a final action vote on Bill seventy-six, the Declaration of Disaster Emergency in response to the Fern Hollow Bridges, Bridge Collapse. Madam Clerk.
Bill seventy-six, Resolution Providing for Ratification and Extension by the Council of the Pittsburgh, Council of the City of Pittsburgh of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency for ninety additional days hereby, making the declaration effective until May second, twenty twenty-two, in response to the collapse of the Fern Hollow Bridge and further authorizing the mayor and the mayor's designated directors, including but not limited to the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an intergovernmental corporation agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and its designated agencies, including but not limited to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency for delegation of certain municipal responsibilities and for receipt of aid in response to the collapse of the Fern Hollow Bridge.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve? Oh, sorry.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry. Oh, you've heard the reading in the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, all in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bill haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And I do want to say in this part that I do want to thank the Gany Administration. They have came in trial by fire with a lot of significant things in this past month. And I think Jake Pollock and Mayor Gany's office has done an amazing job trying to keep council informed, trying to handle the issues. And and also making sure that they're doing everything they can to move this, these issues forward, including the snow removal, the bridges, everything that we're, what they're challenged with. So let's hope next month is a much smoother month for the Gany Administration and for the city of Pittsburgh. Anything else from members? Can I have a motion? Wait, can I have a motion? I'm sorry, for an executive session, Reverend Burgess?
Yes, I need a motion for an executive section for the young people who have determined my ULO, ULO account. We allowed a group of high school students to make the selection of my ULO, C, C, CDBG nominate discretion. And they want to, they want to show counsel their process. So first of all, I need to hold a televised post agenda for that.
Okay, there's no, we have a motion. Do we have a second in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get that scheduled with you.
Second of all, I want to make a motion to hold an executive session on personnel matters with our attorneys.
Personnel and anything else? And also, okay, okay, you got that, the bridges. So we have a motion for an executive, two executive sessions. Do we have a second?
Second, the bridges and personnel, I'm sorry.
Bridges and personnel.
Yep.
Two post agendas.
Executive sessions.
There's two executive sessions, I apologize, two executive sessions. Any discussion? All in, we had a second, right?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get those scheduled for tomorrow. So members are expected to attend both. And now we have meeting announcements, and then I'll get to members. Today at one thirty, council will hold an interview for city solicitor. She's also running trial by fire. Tomorrow, Wednesday, February second, at ten AM, council will hold our standing committees meeting to register to speak. Please fill out the signup form on this council meeting webpage by nine AM Wednesday morning. You may also call the city clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight. Also, tomorrow afternoon at one thirty, council will hold another cable cast post agenda on the potential annexation of Wilkinsburg. Now, those are the, those are the announcements that we have that we have to make. But I also have some announcements that I'd like to discuss. But I will get to that as soon as I go on to members. But then I'm going to make not only some comments about our salary, but we're also going to make, have, hear from our budget office and our solicitor. Councilwoman Strasburger.
All right, before that, I just.
So please keep your comments.
I should have said this earlier, but I echo what you said just now about the Gany Administration working with the mayor's office. And, you know, how difficult a couple of months it's been for for them as a new administration. But I also wanted to say that Councilman O'Connor really showed leadership. This past Friday, he was on site at seven thirty in the morning. He was there until two PM, working with businesses to see what they needed, talking with people, making sure he was getting as fresh information as possible to convey to the news. I saw him on the news multiple times and just, you know, always, you know, unfortunately, this is not the first time we've been in crisis together, gathering together. But he did a really good job with the other elected officials at other levels of government, just showing leadership and then jumping into action to do something that we could do at at the council level. So didn't want that to go without saying.
Thank you. Is there anything else from members? So with that said, I'm going to talk a little bit about our salary because I also see that the media is here because somebody told the media we were having some discussions. And we only spoke to four people, three of whom I know did not make any comments or send anything into the media. One who felt that they're, it was their responsibility, I think. So I would just say that when it comes to our pay increase, I think the public deserves some explanation as to what happened. First of all, the eighty-three thousand came over from the administration. It did not come, it was not initiated, it did not come from this council. The legislation was not from us. It came in the budget, which was televised, printed, shared publicly, had a process with it. You can still find the links to how we voted, how we had the the budget, the budget hearings, and the open communications with the public where the the city went out and had, the mayor's office went out and had meetings. It was not in the preliminary budget, but we often change the preliminary budget because that's what you do. That's why it's called preliminary. But no one at any point said to this council that that eighty-three thousand was a concern. No one. Had someone raised a flag to us and said, hey, there might be a concern here, then we would have had dressed it differently, would have worked with everyone. As it stands now, we are, there were two separate pieces. So I want people to understand the reason why it went, it looks like it's so much higher is because there was another action, which was always in our salary. It was always in there. We, that was not an increase. That was always under salary, and you can see it in the budget in years past. I think it's been there for five years. It was transferred so that we could use it differently. And so, because we were never using it, because this council left the money year after year. And I also have our budget person here. I want you to make a statement and talk about what you think council, what you brought to my attention. And I think the public needs to understand this so that they know that this council is being very responsible and still working on on this issue. Because I want to make sure they understand the budget is still open.
Yeah, Councilwoman. Oh, hi, Mike Strellick, Budget Manager for City Council. Based on my calculations, I believe council could have taken a raise of up to six point eight percent this year, eleven and a half percent last year, and five and a half percent the year before, going back to nineteen eighty-four when this law was implemented. If previous councils had taken a maximum allowable increase, you all would be making at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars today. Instead, nine times previous councils took no increase at all. Over a hundred and fifty thousand.
So, that's not what we talked, that's not what we thought we should do. We are trying to be responsible. Thank you, Mike, for that. But we are still working with our controller, with our budget office, with the mayor's office. And I want to thank the mayor's office. They immediately said that they would work with us. We need to open the budget, reopen the budget to make any corrections or any changes that they are willing to work with us. They also have our, their new solicitor who just came on board yesterday, this week. She's working with us already. She's working on the bridge issue. So I want to thank her as well because they also have her working with us to make sure, to give us a legal opinion. So we have somebody who understands this law and how this, you know, should be affected. And we're working with our solicitor, our council, our city council solicitor, who also has a depth of knowledge in this area. So I wanted to say that we are working with all those parties, and we are welcome the opportunity to work with the controller. And what I have, am asking our clerk to do is to freeze our pay increase until we have the opportunity to have a legal opinion and to clarify any miscommunications or any misunderstandings about the budget. But I want to make sure that everybody understands this was a council salary correction. It was not ever, as I mentioned, the five thousand was not an increase. It was moved over. So it may look like there was a huge increase. But I still think that our increase was significant. But we are still working with our budget office and the controller to identify what exactly. But after we hear from the law department, a legal opinion on what it is we should be doing and how we should do it. This council has never wanted to jeopardize or go against the Charter of the City of Pittsburgh. We took an oath to uphold it, and that's what we intend to do. And if it turns out that we go back to seventy-two thousand, that's what we'll do. But I want to be clear. We also are trying to attract people for the future. In my term, last time, that last cycle, there were at least three people who could not run for my seat because they couldn't take the pay cut. So you can continue to go down this road and think that, you know, we don't have to pay for this, you know, for these positions. But somewhere down the line, the city's going to pay the price for it. So I know that, did you want to add anything? Any members want to add anything? Councilwoman Gross, I want you to add about the the number of employees.
Okay, so, first of all, Councilwoman Kell Smith, Madam President, I want to thank you for being on the front line. And, you know, when this got a bunch of attention around it, you know, you justifying what we really do know, what this council has talked about. I've talked to many members about position warrants. It's kind of off scale right now, okay? We feel, I feel personally that the position warrants, you know, more money towards it, I will say. And the notion that we did this behind closed doors or in some back room, you know, totally misleading. I reject that notion. We all know in today's world, everything is public. There's not trying to squeak something through, certainly a pay raise of of this size. I support the the freeze on the pay raise. To me, that's, that's fine. I want to make sure we have this conversation publicly. I welcome this conversation publicly. I, you know, feel that I have no problem with that. As far as, you know, the legal opinion, we'll wait to see what that is. And if it says we were against the Home Rule Charter, then we're against the Home Rule Charter, and we will make adjustments. So I look forward to having a public conversation around it. Once we do find out if we did break the charter or not. You know, and for now, suspending that pay raise, I think, is the right thing to do until we can have an open and robust conversation in public.
And and I want to thank you, Councilman, because I don't know if any people realize that suggestion came directly from you to to freeze it, to not return it until we know exactly what we're supposed to do, but to freeze it till we get a clear understanding. And so I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Gross, did you want to say anything? Okay.
Checking my numbers while that you asked me to talk about. So I, we started researching in my office, the, what's been in the media that, you know, wondering what city employees are making in comparison to council members. And so there's been some discussion of that in the media. So we are trying to find real numbers. So of all the city employees, how do the city employees' salaries compare to city council salaries? And if, so one of my staff found a watchdog website that you can go to yourself. It's called GovSalaries, G-O-V Salaries. And you can search for every state in the country, and you can search for cities. And if you pull up Pittsburgh, this watchdog website says that in twenty twenty, there were three thousand one hundred and sixty employees at the city of Pittsburgh and that the average annual salary was seventy-six thousand four hundred and seventy-one. Again, this is, council members were making less than seventy-two thousand that year. And that even the median salary in the city of Pittsburgh was seventy-three thousand and twelve dollars, which means that more than half of city employees were bringing home more money than city council members. Some fifteen hundred city employees, in fact, were bringing home more money than city, than city council members. And so that's a significant number of dollars. I just wanted to make sure that the public understands because some, some media outlets have been saying that, or commentators have been saying that we, we are underpaying our employees. But as our budget office has also pointed out, council members for some twenty years or more have been raising the wages across the operating budget in all of city departments. So I just, I wanted to to point that out. And at this one also, you can go to it yourself. You can scroll through literally, you can search for literal individual names of employees. And that year, the highest take-home pay, which is, so it's just two years ago, was two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, was the highest paid employee.
Thank you, Councilman. I do have to say how fortunate I am because I had such an amazing council, working with all of you, giving me advice, helping me through, helping us through this. But your number, Cr- number crunching, your number crunching, Councilwoman Strasburger, between the two, you're amazing with the numbers, and of course Reverend Burgess and Councilman Kraus always, always willing to help, and Councilman Coghill giving me the idea yesterday that would make me get some peace with this, so I just want to thank you all for your work on this, but I will say, we're not going to be discussing this with the media because we are going to be discussing this with our law department, so any comments here, you know, after this, after we have a legal opinion on making sure that we're doing everything correctly here, but I do want to say over and over again that this council, nobody raised a concern of our initial pay, nobody who was overseeing the budget, nobody whose responsibility it is, has raised a flag to us over the $83,000, and the other was a $5,000 transfer that's already under our salary. So I just want to make sure people understand what occurred and that we were never informed, but as soon as we were informed via the media, we acted, this council acted, so, but that's it. I know our solicitor wants to say one word, our council solicitor, not the city's.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Were you still taking comments from members?
Yes.
Yeah, just briefly, you know, I just want to reinforce the comments that have been made, that our budget discussions are always made in the light of day, always. It is printed in public, it is distributed digitally, it is held for public hearings within city council chambers. Every process that we are required to follow, the council did follow, and my concern is about if our controller had issues around salary increases, whether they be for city council, or as Councilwoman Gross pointed out, for other employees making as high as $299,000 a year, that the professional thing to do really was to come to the council, especially through our council president, and express concerns, and why the solicitor chose to go the route of going to media troubles me greatly. I find it outrageously unprofessional and not at the heart of really resolving questions that might be, that he might have, and I won't speak to motive, I'm not sure what the motive might have been, but I would like to register my remarks as finding it incredibly unprofessional to not simply come to the council through the leadership and say, I have some reservations about this. The budget that contains the salary increases, if I remember correctly, came to us on November the 14th, and our final vote came about five weeks later. There was ample opportunity to raise any kinds of reservations that he may have had, which is absolutely welcome and within his right to do. My umbrage is with the route that he chose to do it, and I find it to be incredibly unhelpful, disingenuous, and troubling. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I just want to say quickly that I did speak with our controller yesterday, and I think he was pretty much thrown into this situation. I don't know that, I'm not justifying the comments that were made or anything like that, but I do think he was thrown into the situation. I think the real concern is that someone on our floor thought that this was newsworthy and tried to use it. To me, that's the concerning part, and that we should at least be working together to do what we have to do and be able to trust one another.
Madam President, if in some, in some way, that was, however, it, I, how do I, it didn't get out to anybody. It's a matter of public record. It has existed. There, even if one is approached by media about questions about a public document, it's still respectful to come to the council and say, hey, I'm getting these calls from media about this. Can we discuss this before I make comments so that I am informed? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I just want to say real quickly also that, you know, working with the previous administration, Mayor Paduta's team did a position and compensation analysis for every single non-union position in the city. Almost all other managerial positions received raises in the past years before city council took any raises, and that it was, this is beyond the cola and went be, department by department, year after year, year by year. We also worked with the administration to create a facility management plan, working on a long-term plan to repair neglected facilities. Both reports, salaries for non-union employees and funding city buildings were done by third-party professional companies to avoid politics and favoritism, sexism, et cetera, and there's a, I have a link for that, but I will get that on our website. So with that said, anything else from members?
Yeah. I just, since this is the only time we're going to be speaking, but two things I want to add. Councilwoman Gross, you know, pulling the numbers as to the amount of employees, where we rank below the 50 percentile, I think that's significant to know, and it all goes in, all went into our thought processes to, you know, the numbers that we came up with, you know, so, but if you examine that and you look at, you know, we're, say, here, as far as, you know, pay goes, but our responsibilities are up here, okay? I'll tell you, Christmas Day, New Year's Day, I've got 500, 300 phone calls on snow removal, maybe justly so, maybe not, but many times, I struggle myself as a private contractor and to coming into the public office. I do this because I love it. I do it because I love the City of Pittsburgh. I think we are all probably jointly in it for that effort. You know, so, so there are many, I've had many conversations with Lisa as to, you know, why am I, you know, taking a pay reduction, taking myself out of the field in my own private business, and, you know, dealing with Christmas Day 500 phone calls. It's because I love the city. It's because I love what I do. It really isn't that important, but we will discuss it and we'll examine it and we'll come to the right conclusion.
Thank you, Councilman, and I do want to say that I think that's true of all members. I think all of us feel blessed to be able to have the opportunity to be paid for this job. Very thankful. With that said, we have an emergency. Can I, we're going to hear from our solicitor. Wants to make clear something.
Give him a minute.
We're going to take one second, please. You might want to call 911.
Does he need paramedics?
Does he need a medic?
Does he need a paramedic?
You okay?
Okay.
You're sure?
Is there any?
Thank you.
Be careful.
We just had someone who collapsed in the back, the public who may not be able to see.
Dan Fritzen, Solicitor for Council to the City of Pittsburgh. I just wanted to clarify that we'd asked for an executive session with the law department from the executive branch. I'm not providing the legal counsel or opinion on the personnel matters or the bridge matters. They have a lot of concerns, and they are the attorney for the municipal corporation, and they are the attorney for all governmental units, and I just wanted to clarify that for some of my colleagues that are probably on parliamentary duty watching this right now, and also just the public to understand where the responsibility for compliance lies is with the executive branch, and so we're trying to seek the appropriate resources from the appropriate branch of government. That's all I wanted to say, other than thank you all for making Pittsburgh a better place.
Repeat it.
Thank you. And can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Excuse a member, absent member, and approve the minutes.
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.